Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Grand Lake Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Thursday, May 14th. And at this time...
Tuesday.
I'm sorry?
Tuesday, 12th.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong agenda. Tuesday, May 12th. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Let me get to the right screen here. And at this time, what I'd like to do is to... Okay. If we could... If Ms. Lane, you could lead us in the pledge. We will bring up... Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will ask for a motion for an approval of the agenda. However, I think the board members were emailed. There's an urgent matter that was inadvertently left out, and that is, it's a regular expense that we annually pay for BSA software, and typically would probably go under the consent agenda. I think everyone was sent the email with that in it. It was budgeted for and what have you. If the board wouldn't mind allowing us to place that in the agenda, it doesn't matter to me whether we put it under operational or under consent, but it's a regular expense that we handle annually. Mr. Mansour?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to amend the May 14th agenda to include the BSA expense, and I want to just mention that I appreciate Treasurer Guzak's eagle eye on these expenses as they come across his desk. He can make sure and keep us on the right path here so we don't pay for any expenses that aren't approved by the board, so, thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
I also asked and emailed everybody, but I didn't get a response on the need to purchase the three additional machines for the August primaries. And also, I would need, I think, Mr. Limata's approval to expend postage next week to mail out the notices for the August primary because we're already into that timeframe.
Yeah. On the machines, I would like, we've got time on our last meeting of this month to still have them. It's not an expenditure that's in our budget currently. It's about $25,000, and I'd like to see a little bit more explanation on the machines. But we still will have plenty of time if we approve them later this month.
Mr. Bennett, not $25,000. The email that I sent out to the board was for $16,635, and it's...
Okay.
...the order to program them is what I'm concerned about, so they're ready for August and can be delivered in time.
Yeah, I might have been including the service, the annual service fee in there.
It starts with the sixth year.
Right. So anyways, the motion was by Mr. Mansour to include the regular expense for the BSA software renewal. Is there support for adding that into the agenda?
I have support.
Okay.
On the consent agenda, just to be clear.
Okay, on the consent agenda? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. So all in favor of amending the agenda? Or to accept the...
Won't.
Okay. Yep, I know. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Lane.
Mr. Mansour? Yes. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question.
With regard to the agenda, or...
With regard to the $33,361.
For...
For the software.
Okay.
What you just added to the agenda.
Right.
I have a question. At the end of the information that we received, I see that Clerk Lane signed the check, but it was voided out.
It wasn't voided out, Joe. I just didn't sign it at the time. Because I didn't sign it until I got approval from Mr... From the board that we could sign it. Okay? That's why it's not...
Let me be very specific based on what you just said.
Okay.
The copy I got had "board" written over it at least nine times.
Oh, okay. That's probably because when you copy a check like that, the void does pop up, okay? That's automatically. That way, you can't copy that check on a copy machine.
It's just from the scanner, Joe. It's just from scanning that the void showed up.
Oh, okay.
All right. So we've got approval of the agenda. Is there something with regard to the agenda, Mr. Thomas? Because otherwise, go ahead.
Seeing that we're making changes to the agenda, I think it might be appropriate to make the motion that we have this meeting act as the Thursday night meeting, all in total, so we're making choices tonight and Thursday.
So basically, we...
We put the whole meeting up there.
Right. So on the agenda for tonight, we actually put on there to consider canceling the Thursday meeting. And so, as we work through the agenda, keep that in mind if thinking Mr. Thomas would like to make that motion, apparently, is what I'm hearing. So...
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's go to public comment, and then we will go to, basically, Thursday's agenda. Well, we're on Thursday's agenda, but let's continue with the public comment. Mr. Guzak?
Yes, I just had a question on clarification. I know the Clerk Lane wanted those machines. Is it... I want to check with her to verify that if we order it on the end of the month, is that going to give her enough time to get the bid in, or did we miss out on the bid?
The quote is, as shown in my email to you, they said in their response that the sooner they had the authority, then they could prepare them and see about getting them delivered because of all the elections coming up in August and November.
Right, but did they specify that what the deadline was, you had to get it today, or can you wait till the end of the month? That's my question.
Their response was that the sooner the better.
All right, let's move on to public comment. What we'll do is, I'm going to unmute everybody, and hopefully, we don't have the static that we did the last time. And we'll see if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment. Robbie, I'm needing some help here. Or unmute all? Yep, go through. Yes. I thought there was an unmute all. Okay, right there. Okay, is there anybody that would like to make a public comment that is on the phone with us? Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? I don't hear anybody wanting to make public comment, and we had actually asked that in the agenda, that if anybody wanted to, they could call in and leave a voicemail or email us with their public comment. And I did not receive any for this meeting. Okay?
Mr. Bear? With that, let me just unmute Lonnie.
Lonnie, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and David Laddie, you're there as well?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. All right, so, public comment. I didn't hear anybody wanting to make a public comment, and we didn't receive any emails or voicemails. With that, we said that we would review the township agenda meeting for May 14th on Thursday's meeting, and Mr. Thomas was making the motion, I believe, wanted to make the motion that we cancel Thursday's meeting, take care of these items this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Is there support for Mr. Thomas's motion to cancel Thursday's meeting and go with the votes tonight on these items?
I'll support that.
Okay. Mr. Atkins? Okay, Ms. Lane, would you like to take the roll call vote?
Thank you.
I think...
Mr. Mansour?
You are muted.
Yes. Yep. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes. So we will look at Thursday's agenda and make it this evening's. And so, basically, we have on our consent agenda approval of the treasurer's financial activity, the next item, and I'm going to... I can bring the actual agenda up on the screen, and I will do that here momentarily. For those that are watching the meeting, you'll be able to see it. So the first item on the agenda tonight is, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of SCBA's for the fire department from Apollo Fire Equipment for the amount of $232,696.50, and authorize the superintendent to execute all related document agreements. This bid was well below the previously authorized capital budget amount of $317,916 for this purchase. Mr. Limata, would you like to, for the public's sake, talk a little bit about this purchase?
Absolutely, Supervisor Bennett. Also, just before I do that, when you guys made the motion to take care of the items on Thursday night's agenda, I think you'll still need to go back and do a motion for approval of the consent agenda for Thursday. But the, I believe, and I didn't look to see, but Perdett was going to try to call in this evening to see if there was any specific questions on those SCBA's for the fire department that he could answer for the board. Only one bid was received. He did get a couple of other calls that had said that they were going to bid, but those bids were never received before. And these are the self-contained breathing apparatus for the firefighters. The ones that we have now will go out of service, can't be refilled after November. You recall about a month ago or so, six weeks ago, the chief had asked the board to authorize a transfer from capital projects funds in the amount of $317,916, which was his preliminary purchase estimate for these, and the bid he received from...
I'm just going to put you on speaker, and you talk to myself.
The bid ended up being $232,696.50, terribly less than what we had anticipated when we were going to have to pay. I asked Chief Perdett about that, and he did say that he had to do what was what available and what people are using now, and that it brought the price down, is the way he explained it to me. And he was going to be on...
Dennis, actually, I have Chief Perdett, if we would like to have him say a few words.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Chief Perdett.
Thanks, Supervisor Bennett. I appreciate it for everybody, everybody's time and listening and voting on approving the bid to purchase these units. MSA is the manufacturer of the SCBA's that we're looking at. This is a self-contained breathing apparatus that many of the neighbor departments are using nowadays, and it's very important for us to use compatible systems, although we may have been able to with some other type, but the actual price probably would have been a little bit more. So that's one of the major reasons why we bring the cost down so much, is because so many units are being bought by favorite departments. In addition to that, we have decreased the number of units that we needed from the original estimate with the $317,000 requested, down to the total amount of $232,696. So that's really all I have about us.
Okay. Anyone have a question for Chief Perdett?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go right ahead, Mr. Massey.
Did I understand the superintendent to say that the bids went out late or something, then reached the bid limit?
No.
What did you say about partners?
All I said was that it was on BidNet, so anybody can go on BidNet, download it, bid. Said Chief Perdett didn't have conversations with other companies who indicated they were going to place a bid, but no bids were received.
Okay, so we're okay with it now?
Yeah, follows our purchasing policy, we could use BidNet, so Chief Perdett did everything correct as far as seeking bids and had spoke with others, they just didn't respond to the bid, they were non-responsive.
So how many, just one? Did we only receive one bid?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Lane?
Mr. Chair, I believe I'm ready to make a motion to approve the expenditure of $232,696.50 for the Apollo fire equipment that the fire department needs.
Okay. Is there support? Supported by Mr. Massey. Yeah, I just want to thank the chief and Dennis, Limata, Superintendent. That's quite a sizable savings from our original estimate of $317,000, bringing it down to $232,000, so that's great, especially right now when we're going to be looking for how we can cut some costs here. Okay, so there's been a motion in support. Ms. Lane, let's call for the vote.
All right. Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Mr. Guzak?
Oh, you had your mute button on. Go ahead, Mr. Guzak.
Yes. All right. Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Atkins?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B on the agenda, the board will consider a motion to accept as the first reading of an ordinance to repeal Article 6, or no, 4, Sections 14.80 through 14.92 of the tree protection ordinance. Mr. Limata, I believe we have our building and zoning director, I'm sorry?
He's in the attendees.
Okay. If you'd like him to speak.
Yeah, I defer to both Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Laddie on both of the next two items before the board with the tree protection ordinance, as well as the charitable organizations group solicitations ordinance. I will remind everyone, the tree protection ordinance really came about when you think back to a lot of developments or some of the developments that happened in Grand Lake Township where the developer came in and did a lot of clear cutting of trees, so the tree ordinance was imposed then. There also was legislation last year, it didn't make it through in Lansing, but there was legislation to try to repeal local municipalities' ability to enact these type of ordinances because they consider it a taking, if I have identical property to my neighbor, if I has a lot of trees on it, it can't equate that my property isn't worth as much if it's going to cost $400,000 to remove trees. So that was one of the reasons we looked at it. Also, Canton Township was involved in litigation for this very thing with a similar ordinance. I think Mr. Lloyd can speak.
Yeah, thank you, and hello, everybody. You know, this came about, as far as this recommendation goes, you know, it's a result of, you know, the years that I've been on board over there and a number of complaints, frankly, from folks, developers that come in and want to know if we have a tree ordinance. One of the first questions I asked, actually, you may or may not know that, but it is a considerable expenditure and time expenditure for developers, but they are important. And the thing that I start my report to you out with is just recognizing and pointing out the fact that we have two ordinances in town that manage, regulate trees, if you will. One is our natural features woodland ordinance, and that's in the zoning ordinance, and the other is the one that's before you tonight, which is a pretty comprehensive, very involved, if you will, ordinance, and has an awful lot of requirements. Some might consider them to be onerous. I do know that it takes time, and as Dennis mentioned, it seems to actually create circumstances where people may not be treated fairly. They do overlap, there are contrary terms within the two ordinances that I've recognized in regards to the percentage of trees and the size. There was a recent court action in Canton that we read about, and I don't know if Mr. Laddie will expand on that a little at all, but that legislator, that ruling determined that their ordinance was unconstitutional, at least in part, there were some real issues. So clearly, you know, it's a challenging issue for us, or ordinance for us to have. I personally don't believe that it's necessary. I do believe that we have very good ordinances in place that help to take care of that and manage it without this tree protection ordinance. It's been around, I think, since like maybe 2013, was recently amended in 2016, and that's when penalties and fines were included, and boy, those are really quite substantial. And there's another aspect of the ordinance that we have on the books, this one that's in the general ordinance, and that is that it needs to be administered from a funding standpoint. We have a funding source, there's money in there, and, you know, that does take additional administration to manage those things. So from a planning standpoint, from a permit streamlining standpoint, from a responsibility and a response standpoint, from looking at things from an economic development perspective, that's kind of how and why I presented this. I don't think we're going to hurt ourselves at all if we don't have that ordinance and we use the other one that's already in place. I feel very confident, and folks I've talked to generally feel the same way. And by the way, I did have a chance to follow up with a number of the planning commissioners that I haven't had a chance to talk to in advance, and basically, they're kind of split, I'll say. I got four of them that said, "Let's just get rid of it," they're comfortable with that. I haven't talked to Al, and, but, you know, the other three, you know, they were saying, "Well, maybe we ought to take a look at that." I do know that Mr. Yancho had a concern or two with regards to the keeping farms exempt from, you know, having to comply, and they've been exempt from the very beginning, so we talked through that. So anyway, those are my comments to help, I hope, lead you into some discussion that might be fruitful.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Laddie, would you care to comment?
Just briefly, Dennis's recollection of the history of the ordinance and its difficulty in application are exactly right, and I think Mark's analysis of the overlap ordinances that we have, this general ordinance, and then also the provisions in the zoning ordinance, seem to keep us, or seem to have us covered appropriately, the zoning ordinance, and as Mr. Lloyd mentioned, and Mr. Limata as well. Canton Township had a very similar ordinance to ours, and it was found to be unconstitutional by the federal district court, and so I think what we're doing is killing two birds with one stone, really. We have an ordinance that's arguably unconstitutional, and that we historically have had trouble with enforcement, and it has been accepted, well, not really accepted, it's been begrudgingly applied. So I think we have an opportunity to get rid of something that, first of all, we cannot be able to use, and secondly, we haven't wanted to use in the past. And if anyone has any questions for me, I'll stand by.
Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Massey?
I have a question for the attorney. There are several peoples that are on the board that were, are on the board now, that were on the board when this ordinance was reviewed in 2016, according to Mr. Law. So I would like to know if this ordinance is that important that we should revamp it or whatever, why it wasn't taken care of in 2016, the chairperson was on the board. So what happened at that time?
Well, from my perspective, and you can go on the Canton Township action as well, there was, there are waves of focus that go through planning and follow throughout communities, and ones that are similarly, or consider us to be similarly oriented with Canton Township. I think that there are many people who still feel, even today probably, that an ordinance of that depth and that much regulation is a positive thing. And so I don't think it's necessarily fair to say, "Well, that was a bad idea back then," and it's kind of still a bad idea. I think it's an idea that not everybody shares the importance of the goal, but also some of the mechanisms that are, turned out to be, according to the federal district court, a little bit too much regulation. And so I'm not going to say the idea is something that is a bad idea, and I'm going to say that hindsight, there's probably a way to regulate it, and we have the luxury of having, again, provisions that are as often as that allow us to accomplish essentially the same thing without as much burden. So I think, Joe, with the benefit of hindsight, I guess, one could say that perhaps that wasn't the greatest mechanism for that goal, but I don't necessarily think it's fair to say it was always a bad idea, it should never be explored.
I'll get to Mr. Atkins. I just wanted to add that some history in the past couple of years on this, Mr. Massey, was that the previous board actually discussed, whether it was formally or informally, getting rid of this ordinance. It wasn't until, I think, you know, we also had a contracted planner at the time, we didn't have a staff planner. With Mr. Lloyd joining the staff, we were able to look into a little bit more. But I think the recent ruling that Canton went through in the potential lawsuit that they were facing for having that on the books, it makes sense for us to get rid of it. I can tell you that I've had quite a few people ask me, you know, in terms of, you know, developers. I even, when I was campaigning four years ago, I had a couple people, developers, that are in the township, that said, "You've got to get rid of that. It's a killer in terms of bringing any business to the township or any developments." You know, and we're in the midst of trying to do something with Tech Village and what have you. I did speak with Mr. Yancho, who actually, you know, owned a tree farm, or does, and his only concern was that, you know, we exempt in our regular ordinance, tree farms, you know, orchards and nurseries. And so, you know, it makes sense that, you know, those places should be exempt from any kind of ordinance that we have, but we do have an ordinance on the book, so it isn't like we're getting rid of it entirely, but this one is onerous. Mr. Atkins? You had your hand up, Mr. Atkins, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just wonder, is there anything that makes this pressing to get done right now, or...
Can I actually address that?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Laddie.
We've had, we have had difficulty in administering this ordinance for a couple different reasons. First of all, it's got a lot of, it's a little bit cumbersome as far as identification of species... of species and volume and prices. It requires experts on both sides, for us and, and for a property owner. But also, we, we haven't settled on a, really a satisfactory way to allocate the, the money that we receive in lieu of somebody removing trees and planting trees. And I know that we had that issue occur not too long ago, and, and that is an issue that we, that we want to get resolved comfortably, right? We're not in any urgent path necessarily, but we don't want to see that kind of, that situation occur again, and we currently have, again, I think we're holding some money for developer that we've got, our hands are kind of tied on what we can spend it for. So not the end of the world, but not something we want to see.
Well, I think one of the, one of my explanations for that, Mr. Laddie, and I think, Mr. Lloyd, I opened up your line again as well, but, you know, right now, we're, we're in the middle of still a shutdown, and we're looking at what, what can we do when we open back up for development to help developers to look at Grand Lake Township. You know, it'd be great that we turn off the switch for the shutdown and things get right back to normal, but I know that several board members have emailed suggestions on what we can do to help the public. I think this is an effort to try and help developers to say, hey, you know what? I know Mr. Lloyd has had several conversations with Dennis and I about different ideas of what we can do once things open up to stimulate local development. So this is one piece of it to get ready, so that when things do open up, maybe we can say, hey, guess what? You know, we've gotten rid of some of the onerous, onerous things that, that we've had, and look, we're, we're trying to be even more open for business. And it was, it, we're, we're potentially facing lawsuits with having this if Canton Township was being sued for the, for a very similar ordinance. Who's? Yes, Mr. Massey.
I understand that the word sue, but let me, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does she know so much about Canton Township?
Well, I just know, I just know, I just know what I've read in the papers.
Okay, who won the lawsuit?
Well, the, they ruled it unconstitutional, so I guess the, the people that were suing won the lawsuit.
I, I would say the property owner prevailed, let me know.
Mr. Thomas? We can't hear you, Mr. Thomas.
I will be voting no, and let me explain this by reason. I think that this ordinance needs to be looked at. I think it's a very important ordinance that needs to be changed, but I also think it's quite important imperative that our residents have an opportunity to speak on this, and I would like to hold this up until we can meet face to face with, with our residents, and that's why I'll be voting no.
Okay. Mr. Mansour, and then Ms. Lane.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. So it, it seems, first of all, I read it, I went through the, the ordinance, and it does seem very prescriptive to me, so in that respect, I can see where it causes significant problems because of all the specificity in it. So I definitely think that at a minimum, it needs a, a real thorough going through. But the couple of things that I think about is, first, you know, we had that original zoning tree ordinance available to us, but whatever that did, it didn't seem, it must have not been sufficient for whatever this circumstance was that caused the previous board to go through and create this, this new general ordinance. And looking at it, it doesn't seem as though this was done on some willy-nilly basis. I mean, it is literally 16 pages, it's nearly 4,000 words, so it's, again, it's not like someone tried to like slide something in, in a, in an ordinance at the last minute. So all I'm saying is, is that that might give us a little reason to kind of go back and think about this, and as far as the, as far as the impact on development-
I'm having a problem.
Since this ordinance has been in place, it hasn't stopped our development. I mean, we've had Magna, we've had Hope County, we've had Zersing Homes. We've had all kinds of development that, that we've managed to get through on this. So again, I, I definitely think it's too prescriptive, I definitely think it needs a, a looking at, but in terms of a, a total repeal right now, doesn't seem like it's the, the right thing to do at this point.
Okay, I got it. Ms. Lane?
The board, this is only the first reading, and during the next week and a half till, or almost a month, because it has to be published in the newspaper, and then we have to have another second hearing on it before it can be adopted and published in, in its final phase. So I think we have the time the board has asked for, and I'm willing to make a motion to at least adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and then take the time between now and the second reading, which is several weeks, to do any further study you need to do or want to do.
Okay. Mr. Mansour, do you have your hand up?
No, no, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'll support that motion, Ms. Lane. You're right, we, we have to have several hearings on this, and, and we can delve into it even deeper, but I can tell you, we've been, we've been talking about this for years, it isn't something recent, so. So anyways, with that, I'll ask for the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Mr. Massey.
You are, you are muted, Mr. Massey.
Hold on.
You're unmuted, go ahead.
Hold on.
Are you voting no or yes, Mr. Massey?
I'm voting no.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Mansour?
Uh, no.
Mr. Guzak?
Uh, no.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next item on the agenda, the-
Laddie's got his hand up.
I'm sorry?
Laddie has his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry. You know what, Mr. Laddie has his hand up, let me just, see, let's see, for some reason, there you go. Hold on just a second, Mr. Laddie, if I can hear. There. Mr. Laddie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can, thanks. I just want to, I just want to point one thing out. We have not, we've suspended the enforcement of this ordinance, I think at least at the planning and zoning level, and so it's, despite the fact that it was, that its repeal was voted down, you do not intend us to, to, to enforce this ordinance as it's currently written. Do you intend us to continue with it being suspended, and also at least to make sure that it's not in conflict with the court's decision regarding Canton Township?
Mr. Mansour?
Yeah, I, I think that that's a prudent, I mean, the, the whole point of this for me was to get a look at this thing and have some more time, so if, if it's in a suspension mode now, I'm okay with that, understanding.
Okay, thank you.
What about the rest of the board? What about the rest of the board?
I'm okay with that suspension, I think it still should be in place because of the possibility of a lawsuit.
Anyone else? Is, so everybody, I, I take it by not hearing anything from the board that we're okay with keeping it suspended?
Yeah, concurrence is, if you're asking for-
Yes.
It needs us to give an opinion. I'm, I told the, the suspension, I-
By not hearing anything, I guess I'm taking that as a consensus that the board is okay with suspending it, for, keeping it suspended for now. Okay, next item on the agenda is the board will consider a motion to approve the road construction agreement for the Granville Estates special ass-
No, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, you've jumped ahead of the-
Gotcha, yep, I'm sorry. The board will consider, item C, the board will consider a motion to accept the first reading of an ordinance defining, regulating, and licensing charitable or civic organizations soliciting within public roadways and providing for penalties for violations thereof. Mr. Limidah? I see, Mr. Mansour, you have your hand up?
Yes, I was just going to say that in order to get this started, I certainly will make the motion to accept the first reading of this ordinance defining, regulating, licensing charitable and civic organizations soliciting within the public roadways.
Your part, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I've got Chief, as, Chief Wiles is on the, on the phone as well here. Mr. Limidah or Chief Wiles, would you care to comment?
Mr. Supervisor, this really did come about from a discussion from Chief Wiles, and well, we don't own the roads, and we can't do anything to stop solicitation in the roadway. Probably the most popular form of this that you can think of is either the old newsboys on the corner, or the silver boot that you've seen in other places, but Chief Wiles certainly has some concerns about being able to regulate the safety, since most of the streets and roads that occur, that this occurs in the township, the speed limit is much higher than what you would typically see in a downtown area, which brings up a concern, as well as, you know, the fact that there, I think there was something scheduled in June, and that was why this came before you, but I'll defer to, again, Mr. Laddie and Mr. Wiles to provide some information for the board.
Chief Wiles?
Yeah, good evening, thank you. Currently, in the state of Michigan, there is state law that, that deals with roadway solicitation. In that state law, it allows the local unit of government to enforce regulations restricting, but not prohibiting roadway solicitations. The ordinance as drafted follows the current rules under the state law, but then adds some certain restrictions in an effort to enhance the safety, like Mr. Limidah said. We are a little different than a downtown area with slower speeds. We have several streets going through our municipality that are 55 miles an hour. Back Door Highway, where you see a lot of roadway solicitation, at the point there is 55 miles an hour, and certainly a, a safety issue for those people standing in the roadway collecting donations. Some of the additions that you'll see in the, in the proposed local ordinance deal with frequency, how often someone can solicit in the township, dealing with objects that can be carried in the roadway, that is not covered by state law, but we certainly don't want stands or signs out in the roadway like we've seen in some other municipalities. Giving timeframes as far as when they can do it, no work zones, and of course, we added no solicitation on roadways where the speed limit is over 45 miles an hour. Other than that, it is very consistent with the current state law, just asking for those local restrictions to enhance the safety of those people that may be interested in doing solicitations.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Massey.
I have a question for the attorney.
Go ahead.
Personal injury. Again, I know anyone can sue, but is it likely that the township faces a huge personal injury lawsuit?
Well, and it's interesting you ask that, because we, when we first started to look at the state statute, we had conversations about what is the danger of us adding some requirements, because as we, the farther we bear away from the state statute either being more restricted or less restricted, we could find ourselves, now, the, the automatic immunity that we get, because this is a state regulation and because the county actually owns and operates the roadways, and we decided, though, that it's probably more important to make sure that some of our safety concerns, and the chief mentioned them, as far as times and speed limit intersections and things like that, that it was more important that we, we add a couple of other safety measures that were not present in the state law. And while I agree that the prospect of being sued by somebody who's out in the roadway soliciting pursuant to a permit and pursuant to our ordinance is something that could happen, I, I think, I, I think that, that we enjoy generally governmental immunity, and I think that the, the few little nuances that we added are not going to add any additional exposure to us. So what you said initially was right on, anyone can file a lawsuit. I believe, though, that if, that if, God forbid, something happened with somebody who was injured while subject to our permit, I think we'd ultimately prevail in that.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a follow-up question for the attorney.
Go ahead.
So are you suggesting, based on your legal knowledge, that we should vote yes or c, or we should vote to revise c?
Well, I think we should, I think we should adopt the ordinance as provided, as presented. Again, whether we do or with, whether we don't, it's already allowed by state law, and I don't think, again, our, our slight changes raise any exposure risk to us. So my recommendation is that you adopt the ordinance as presented.
Mr. Mansour?
Thank you. So I, I mean, I'm generally in support of this, and I think, you know, as with the rest of our ordinances, as long as we, you know, regularly and consistently apply it, I think everything is, is fine here. The, the part that I am, I guess, have a concern is, and I think this kind of goes back to the other point, is when it talks about, in under section two, charitable civic organizations shall mean nonprofit organizations, et cetera, et cetera, then it comes to the bottom where it says, with documentation as determined acceptable by the township supervisor. And my, my thinking here is, is, you know, do we want to, to put the township supervisor in kind of a potentially arbitrary situation here, or is there a more objective way to, to get, you know, to achieve that goal?
Mr. Laddie?
Attorney Laddie, probably.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could weigh in on that, I-
Yes.
My interpretation of that section is really to just verify that the proper, the proper paperwork has been submitted and accepted to, to allow someone to be a 501(c)(3) or a (4), and I don't necessarily, I see that more as an administrative effort, not necessarily something that would involve questioning of the supervisor, but that said, it doesn't need to be the supervisor, it could be, it could be the township, it could be anybody in administration in township that could just look at that, at that tax document and determine whether or not they're charitable.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Massey.
I have a question for the attorney, please.
Go ahead.
Attorney Laddie, it has been my experiences that when a, a name appears in a, in a lawsuit, that name of a person bears some responsibility.
Uh, well, I, presumably, yes, that, that makes sense.
So I, I understood you to say that probably it's preferable just to have the township name in place of, in place of the supervisor.
Well, I think, again, if, if somebody was, and under that, under this context, somebody would be suing us, saying, hey, you denied me my, my ability to solicit because you filed some issue by status 501(c)(3) or (4), and in that case, if it was Supervisor Bennett, for example, that, that determined that, that paperwork is not acceptable, then I think it's logical that he might find himself named in a lawsuit. I think if it was the township or any other office in the township, I think the result would be the same. And I mean, Mr. Bennett, presumably, if it was, if it was made under the color of his authority, he's going to be operating as his, you know, in his capacity as a township supervisor, don't have any personal liability, but I don't, I, I just, I think it's, I do understand that it's, it's sort of unusual to name a specific office, particularly when you consider that the police chief is the, has really got the discretion in this ordinance. It's odd to name the supervisor as sort of, with a, task him with something that's kind of ministerial, so I don't know how Supervisor Bennett feels about it, but I think we could easily, but I mean, we don't need to, to decide on the paperwork's order, I think it could be a, I think we could just say, proof of, of qualifications or status as reviewed by the township or approved by the township.
Or it's just verified by the police chief or something.
Well, sure, we can have Mr. Wiles in that lawsuit, that's fine.
Yeah. I mean, we, well, we also have in all of our contracts that, you know, that the supervisor or the superintendent- or the superintendent are the, you know, signers on those things, so it makes no difference to me, you know, whether we put Chief Wiles on there because you guys are looking out for me personally or what, there's government immunity, so I'm, I'm not worried about whether I'm named in this thing. They're probably going to name me regardless if, if they think that I was somehow involved in decision-making, so as would any board member, so. Ms. Lane?
Again, I want to remind the whole board that this is the first reading, there'll be a publication, the Grand Line Two, a second reading, and changes can be made over the next several weeks, until week 5.
Well, there is a motion to a supported, I believe, right, Ms. Lane?
Yes, for first reading.
Okay. Mr. Mansour?
Uh, I, yes, on that basis, I would, this is voting, I'll vote yes for the first reading.
Okay. So, Ms. Lane, go ahead and call the vote.
All right, Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Okay. So, item D, the, the board will consider a motion to approve the road construction agreement for the Granville Estates Special Assessment District with the Genesee County Road Commission in the amount estimated of $650,000 and authorize the township supervisor to execute all related contracts and agreements.
So vote, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion supported by Mr. Mans, Mansour. Any discussion? Mr. Limad, any comment from, on this?
So, the board will still hold a cost of public hearing for this, but this is to move this construction agreement forward so that they can actually do the design and bidding force on the project to commence, it'll come back before you again. This does take care of Granville Estates, including Robin and Thrash, but then also that part of Metal Art Drive between Robin and Thrash, so the entire projects, the special assessment districts that were approved by the board for Granville Estates.
Very good. So we're moving forward on that. So, any other discussion, otherwise we'll move on a vote for that. Ms. Lane?
Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. With that, moving, moving through the agenda to next future agenda items, if anybody has anything they would like, email me and we can discuss. The, I'd like to get a report from Mr. Limada on an update with regard to where we're at with the COVID issue with the township and what measures we've been taking to get ready for reopening, and in fact, we have reopened to a limited extent, the building department. Mr. Limada?
Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, the, obviously, there is extended to executive order through the 28th. Some of those things were allowing us to open up certain portions of the township again, mostly building and planning, so we did see residential and commercial construction resumed, which then triggered our building department to go back into action, support those activities. Mr. Lloyd had a great plan in place from the time we first went out, obviously changed as we moved through, you know, we are up and running with, with construction and we have the ability to now review issued permits and actually get the whole thing going again, which was good. As part of our preparedness and response plan for COVID-19, that the governor's executive order required, we got that out, I believe the board was, all sent a copy of that, also the employee expectations document, which we were required to produce and make available as we began to bring employees back in. We do still have the employees who were previously laid off, on layoff through the 28th, we'll start to bring them back up again. Most of the changes that we needed to make at the office have been completed, including putting up plexiglass guards. We do have a great supply of hand sanitizer and masks at the present time that we can provide, we will encourage folks to bring in their cloth masks if they still approve. The 95 masks were reserved for first responders, these are all different masks that we have made available, so if somebody needs them, we do have them at the township office. The employee expectations agreement starts from the time they pull in the parking lot and you need to put on a mask before they come into work, once for their individual workstation, if you're not interacting with other people. They don't have to wear it full-time, but they do have to wear it when they move about the building through hallways. Going to encourage appointments for folks if we can get open back up at the end of the month, so that rather than have people come and have to stand outside waiting so they can move in and maintain the social distancing, we're going to spend a great deal of time educating the public that appointments will probably be the best way to go, we're going to set it up so that they can get into a conference room and then the responsibility of whoever had the appointment is to wipe down that conference room again to make sure that, heard to do by the executive directives, the CDC and the county health department. FEMA, we are, my sound to the board about the FEMA registration, we're registered, we're good to go, I presented a mandatory webinar for that yesterday with the Michigan State Police Homeland Security. Right now, it's looking at roughly a little over $4,000 expenditures that we have up that we wouldn't have had to spend otherwise. We'll continue to monitor those and add them up so that we can apply those, when we do our public search, FEMA, we will qualify for at least 75% reimbursement through the 25. We are ready to go through that any time that we need to. Obviously, she extended the Open Meetings Act through June 30th, so I don't know if that's any kind of indication that she expects that she's, they're going to continue to encourage municipalities to not hold in-person meetings. While this has been working well, I'm looking forward to the date that we can get back and hold in-person meetings because I'm just thinking it's so much easier to go through how that consideration has been, to think about what we can do for the auditorium where we can get to go back in. If we are able to physically separate the board members by six feet, Mr. Laddie and I could certainly sit at a table off to the side and do a meeting, but without, we can get to go back. But we do have the building ready to go, we've got Xs out to show where the six-foot separation is, everybody's gotten a copy of the expectations. And one last update I have for you in regards to this, there is a thing called the work share program through the state unemployment, and we're looking at that now because we need to extend, if it's going to go on, we can extend it and what it does for us is allows us to still save some money if we bring somebody back, you have to reduce somebody to 10 or 15%, but what it could mean is that we can do work share and rotate people as we call them back in, maybe they only work three days or four days, we have the 25% that picks up the other days or that portion that we can spare. 25%, it has to be across the board by the group, if we did that, then that 25%, they'll get 25% of whatever they were due for unemployment plus the $600 federal unemployment that went in there, so it shouldn't harm the employees that do that, but it still gives us the opportunity to save some additional funds while we start to struggle through some of the cuts or some of the adjustments that we're going to have to make moving forward. You know, staff meetings together for tomorrow morning to discuss in greater detail with all the departments, any cuts and where they've, where they've decided to take a look at where we can potentially save some money. Any questions that we have to answer?
Dennis, where, I know you've had some discussion with regard to the state treasurer's office, and I see your hand up, Mr. Massey, with regard to revenue sharing and what the, you know, potential losses are. I think we might have touched on it at the last meeting, but maybe you could, for the public and for our own sake, just kind of remind us what we're looking at in terms of revenue sharing, what we get and what the potential losses are here.
Sure, Mr. Supervisor, I've actually been on several webinars with the Department of Treasury, MML, MTA, MAC, and initially I started off by saying of, you know, potential 30% reduction in our constitutional revenue sharing, that's pretty much been agreed on, that we're looking at 50% for 2020 and it will continue through 2021, so it'll have budget implications as we start to put the budget together and have it here. You know, it's just one of those things, it's unfortunate, they're still trying to fight it on a national level to get some of the funding that was provided to the states from the federal government to free up that they can actually go back and fill holes that occurred from loss of sales tax revenue. Right now, that hasn't occurred, there's still that fight in Washington and maybe that will eventually become the case, but as of right now, we need to plan on a 5% reduction, so about $1.6 million that we'll lose in revenue for 2020. There's also the statutory revenue sharing, we don't have any information on that, although as if we're supposed to balance their budget, they certainly have the ability to cut out, you know, that as well, and, and so whether that occurs, it's anybody's guess, we'll know after the 15th is when they're supposed to be on revenue sharing and we shouldn't be getting the information supplied to us sometime after day 15th on what exactly that looks like.
Mr. Massey?
A question for the superintendent.
Yes.
How many employees are laid off?
Uh, I believe the number is 12.
Okay. Mr. Atkins?
Uh, two questions. One, Mr. Limad, are you, are you implementing any type of temperature checks for the employees to document?
The employee expectation sheet that went out, we did purchase the no-touch thermometers and we have them available. Now, we're not administering those because that gets into an area of, that we shouldn't be getting involved in as to do with, very specifically, the disability act, we're not allowed to, even if it's a medical procedure. However, we're encouraging the use of those, so while we can't force anyone to do it, we can include them available at every entrance.
What was your other question, Mr. Atkins?
You know, if this were to, are you looking at departments and what job functions can be performed remotely in the event that this happens again? I think going forward, less people in buildings are going to be what a lot of companies are looking at.
Absolutely, trustee Atkins, I appreciate you bringing that up. I mean, it's one of those things where we'll look at everything and they're reducing the amount of people in the building, I mean, you guys are all well aware of the fact that we're just about bursting out the seams, we're bought in parts of recreation and, you know, we just keep, you know, brought in fire, brought in parts of recreation just over the last year to an already very packed house. Some of those areas are going to be challenging, even keeping that separation, so we're going to continue to look at that and as we move forward, if we can probably do some sort of job share or work remotely, most people are going to have to come into the office at some point, but if we can, even a day or week, and we can stagger schedules and we can limit the amount of people in the building, especially when there's the talk of the second wave that could come out this fall, it's one of those things that we need to have with our plan and ready to go and roll out at, at a moment's notice, certainly, even, you know, keeping the appointment thing going as long as we can for the public, we have to be accessible, but it's one of the things on a webinar with the MTA today, they brought up the point that, you know, do you have to have your doors unlocked, you know, eight to five Monday through Friday? The answer is no, there's no law that says township has to be open, you have to be accessible to the public, you have to be able to interact with the person, but, I mean, you can do it from your home, there's no law that says it has to be a township office, you have to be open, obviously, being in a township facility, we're all, materials are in, you know, resources is the best of that, but we do have some flexibility here to try to put a plan together that we can really limit the amount of people that we can, their house together in a building.
Okay. I think, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Thomas, you had your hand up?
You know, one is saying that we have a wall, I would like to, Mr. Limad, I would like to see with the progress that we are on the last revision of the water, of the water study, the last, the very last revision, could you please email that out to the township trustees and board?
We can send, we can have them send whatever, we did ask them to go back and review it based upon the new [inaudible].
Okay, I understand that, but can you send this out, latest one, for how many revisions have we had just to leave it up?
It's a, it's a work in progress, that's, I don't know the answer to that, it's drafted and reviewed, they were prepared to present to the board last month, so I would have, you would have had the final version last month, so the only difference now is that we've asked them to relook at the assumptions based upon the financial picture. You guys haven't seen this yet, but we've got some preliminary [inaudible] in on the loss in cubic feet of the amount of water over the last two months and it's staggering, like a 25% decrease in the amount of, of commercial water use, clearly that's going to have a sizeable impact on the finances of the water rate study.
Can you make sure that we get the last revision?
We will, we will send out the, what we've gotten. But it, but under, but understand, it's a work in progress, so that is not the final version.
I understand that, I understand, I just, it's the last revision.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Limada?
All right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, the, the DPW, I assume, is who's been in here putting the Plexiglas dividers up and what have you, it did a great job and I think we're ready when we do open the doors for, for people to come in. So, great job to them for, for the work they've done and I think we're ready. So, with that, you have board reports in the packet and since our committees haven't been meeting such as planning and I think the fire commission might be meeting here shortly for their last meeting on next Tuesday, so hopefully we'll be able to wrap things up with that. So with that, I appreciate everybody's cooperation with doing these online meetings and hopefully we'll be able to meet in person very soon.
Mr. Chair, could I, I hate to interrupt you, but I, this is a matter of procedure.
Yes.
We, I know that, that in the beginning of the meeting, we had talked about the approval of the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting, which is tonight, and then we also have, have adopted the agenda and the consent agenda of our Thursday meeting and we know now that we're not going to have that meeting and that this meeting stood in both places. So I want to make sure though that we, the consent agenda as amended for, for tonight's meeting and also Thursday's, but also that we approve the minutes that were a part of the Thursday agenda, I just wanted to double check that we did.
Okay. We probably need a motion to approve the minutes, well, we didn't handle that item specifically, but if, if there's a motion to approve the minutes from April 28th, I'll entertain that at this time. Mr. Atkins makes the motion.
I'll support it.
Mr. Thomas supports, Ms. Lane? Here, go ahead, Ms. Lane, you were muted.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
Mr. Guzak?
Go ahead, Mr. Guzak, you were muted.
Yes. Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chair. Myself, yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the, basically the motion to approve the treasurer's financial report.
And BSA.
And, and the BSA software, yes.
Yeah, gotta have that.
Right, the BSA expense that everybody was emailing. Okay, is there support?
I make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Atkins, supported by Mr. Mansour. Ms. Lane?
All right, Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Laddie, for bringing that up. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Of course.
Okay. Ms. Lane? I don't know if we.
Lane's supported by Thomas, if that's what we're doing, the chairman.
I'm opposed to it.
Mr. Mansour?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas?
No, he's muted.
He's saying yes, but.
All right, he shook his head. Mr. Atkins? Mr. Guzak?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
All right.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.